First council meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review the agenda. Everything is okay, can we move forward with motion on that? Move by.
Recording in progress.
Move by councillor.
You're recording in progress.
Second by. Mayor Edley. Be resolved that councillor Towne Newpaw approved the regular meeting agenda for June 1st, 2021. All in favor, carry. Okay, and along with the approval of the minutes, everybody's had a chance to review last minute meetings and public hearing, and if everybody's comfortable with that, no errors or omissions, can I move forward with a motion on that? Move by councillor DeDoe. Second by councillor Drury. Be resolved that councillor Towne Newpaw approved the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearing held May 18th, 2021. As circuitous, all in favor, carry. Okay, we are into council reports. Who has the council report today? Councillor DeDoe.
Yeah, I just want to update council on what's happening with libraries. It's been a couple of weeks now.
Okay.
What we're doing is our librarians are working hard even though libraries are closed or on pickup access to books. But the WMRL is working on a new policy, so as a board, that's something we've been working on. And we hope to pass it before summer comes. So this near the end of the month, we're going to be passing a new 100-page policy manual for our board, which is a lot of fun, especially because we have multiple drafts now of meeting. And definitely a lot of fun to be on this committee right now. But note that that's what we've been working on, and we're still working with our associate communities such as Brandon on what the best location will be for their library. And we've been working with their council quite closely, so their council's been joining us when we have a regular board meeting. So working with the Brandon council is definitely interesting to hear the different takes from the different councillors from the different community.
And everything's still being done on Zoom, I assume?
Yes, unfortunately, due to COVID, it's got a lot of negatives. I think the only plus is a lot of clerical work is being done, which is necessary. It's one of those necessary evils, but everything is done through Zoom right now. We keep setting a date to meet in person to pass the resolutions, but they keep getting postponed.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you, Jason. Anybody else? Councillor DeDoe.
Oh, this is reporting that in early April, this is about the remediation and restoration of Park Lake. Narnia April Standup completed their consultant report regarding the remediation of Park Lake to a pre-disaster or pre-flood state. This report was then provided to the Manitoba Emergency Measures Organization for their review under the Disaster Financial Assistance Program. This afternoon, we received notification that Niqwa can proceed with the restoration of Park Lake. As a result, administration will initiate contact with Standup to request a meeting which will begin to outline the timeframes for this project, so we can get underway.
Okay, not to tell you. No questions, any comments? Okay. Captain Mary Edley.
I've got an announcement here from our fire chief that please be advised, due to the dry conditions, a burn down was effective immediately is back in place for Towne and Niqwa. So no fires permitted until further notice. This includes all fire pits, fire receptacles, and outdoor fireplaces. And then, we have a good news. So a special thank you to Niqwa resident Val Wilson for starting a small fundraiser on her own. Excuse me, has grown to over $5,600 for the fire department. So some of the items that this will go to is there's LED road flares, windshield cutter, drip torches, 100 feet 1-inch hoses, helmet lights, hand tools, negative tools. So a lot of the equipment that is either used for firefighting or for helping to save lives. So very special thank you to Val. We have a thank you back in return from the Niqwa Fire Department. So thank you very much for all your donations to Val's We Care fundraiser. Your support is appreciated. We are very proud to serve you and each and every one of you. So thank you to Val and our community.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, it was a tremendous response from the community, right? That's a huge number that we received. Okay, anybody else to the council report? Okay, we will move forward with management operations, Denise.
Thank you, Mayor McCutcheon. So a little late, because we have some other business we'll discuss later on in the meeting, but we still have our staff hiring ongoing. I have to take some time off and cancel some meetings because I have a child that required a COVID test going to get passed. Cemetery, we did, like I said last week, we had some comments regarding the removal. We've had the replacement starting of those trees and the wind mark out the next rule that staff will work on again. And we will have another delivery of trees, member groups tomorrow from Jeffrey's Nursery, Towne Newpaw. We have a few residents calling in and inquiring about some trees, thinking that they were in a very poor condition, dead, diseased. In speaking with the nursery, they just said it's just that horrible kind of drought attitude that the frost didn't help anything. So I think residents be patient, some trees are a lot slower than others this year, it's been that kind of a year. Key component would be to say I'd direct some downspouts to some that look a little sickly and give them that extra drink of water whenever you get some rain coming here, and that should definitely help them out. Other staff did put another water and sewer removal today on Third Avenue, I believe, or Second Avenue. And then I'll just ask that residents in the upcoming weeks, I haven't seen any material mobilized yet, but our micro steel contractor has notified us that they expect to start shortly. We've been bumped to the top of the list because management structure, I guess, didn't have everything quite lined up yet. So what are their first provincial stock once they cross the border? This work is expected to go from round them to water plants essentially up to the school, from hospital. We'll have these skips here and there with some good sections of pavement, but it does cure quickly. But we do need residents to stay off the area while they're working and cleaning. They've got streets off, so we don't want to make a car damage or oxygen film and stuff like that. It does cure quickly, so I think the streets will be open possibly within half a day, a day of them being closed. So it will be a little slight interruption with staff and that to residents, but things should move on quickly.
Okay. No, that's great. Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Okay, thank you, Janine. Okay, we have our economic development officer, Mary Crew, and she's going to bring us up to speed on what's been going on in her world.
Thank you. So there is my report that's attached on Holnet. And then the main purpose for coming tonight is to give you an update on the annual survey that I did. So we do this annual business survey with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm just going to get some highlights. We had 30% of our membership responded to the survey. And once again, this year, the impact of COVID was top of mind for a lot of the responses. We had businesses respond. They've been in business for one year up to 125 years, so broad spectrum. The first was about employees full-time or part-time. Certainly, the majority of our businesses have all full-time staff. The range of staff was 1 to 1,748. Not hard to tell who the one business was that responded to the survey. And then there was a couple of questions that got some really interesting responses. So I ask every year about hiring plans, and so they have three choices. They're planning to hire, they're stable, or they're planning to lay off. This is the first survey I've done since 2015 where there was no plans for layoff of employees. So that's a very positive thing for our community. The number of businesses planning to hire has tripled from last year to this year. 12% last year, 36% this year say they plan to hire. So that's also a positive indicator for our local economy. Then we always ask about three-year with plans for business. So where are you headed? This is the first time since 2016 that there are no businesses looking to downsize. So that's positive. And plans for business expansion jumped from 25% to 43% of the businesses that responded. Another interesting thing that I think is probably the result of online shopping. And we asked where the primary market is for the business. Is it local, is it regional, provincial? The regional market jumped from 20% last year to 43% this year. So that's people are shopping online, more visible online, and that's actually increasing the area that they're getting customers from. Number one business issue was not a surprise, COVID-19. I actually had a couple of responses that were overwhelmed by the amount of work that their business was receiving. But they agreed it was a good problem to have. There was, and there is pretty consistent issues around staffing, finding employees. There was also a comment about finding the right trades, that they're not available locally. And one comment about inventory, which I imagine they can give much detail, but COVID has impacted a lot of supply chains, so. And then the following questions are more around chamber specific, how we can support. So we're going to continue to do those things that the businesses are asking for, chamber bucks, more training once we can do that, and increased marketing, and perhaps some bigger business promotions across our community. And they're interested in shop local campaigns and virtual business after fives, which is something we've been trying to get uptake on since we can't meet face to face to do our usual business after five events. And so we have some uptake on that at this point. So any questions on the business survey?
Well, it sounds very positive for 2021. We just need to get back to being able to do business on a day-to-day basis, right? Councillor Drury.
I think it really speaks to resilience out the business community. A lot of adaptive, we've seen online presence show up where there was never even consideration prior to COVID-19. We've seen people who do personal services who've been closed in excess of 220 days since COVID has started. We've got a number of businesses that are affected that way within our community, which is a big load to bear on them, but it's nice to see that they're resilient. They've created those online presences and they've adapted. And I guess we're very fortunate to have the owners and the entrepreneurs in this community that are doing what they're doing in light of this pandemic as well. It's fantastic to see.
Absolutely. It's the strength of those business owners that carry us through difficult times like this.
They could have created ghost town on Main Street, and it's been a deal, but still about to happen.
So then there's just, I'm just going to touch on a couple more highlights from my report. I started a new partnership with Settlement Services to do business start training with some of their clients. This is done at their request, I've offered it several times. But so we're actually doing this first one on Friday. And depending on uptake, then I will follow it up with a business plan development webinar following, which I'm hoping if COVID behaves itself, will lead into a what's the big idea event in October. But I'm trying not to think about that yet. So just to follow up to the Canadian Healthy Communities Initiative grant that was applied for was unsuccessful, but they do have a round two that I'm going to try again and see what they say. But there has been no word yet on the community spaces or the building sustainable community grants. For tourism, we are working with Travel Manitoba this year. They are going to fund gateway signage for every place branded community. So they've hired an architect company that will do the designing of the signage, install all of that for us. So we're working with Sputnik Architecture. One and I actually met with them to discuss where we'd like to see locations for those signs. And the Riverbend Market is a new initiative of Niqwa Tourism. So that's a Manitoba crafters market that will be held on July 23rd and 24th at Riverbend Park. There will be an admission fee of $5 to go into the crafters market. And all of the proceeds from that admission fee are going to support the swimming pool upgrades. And we worked on Back Forty, the large sign for the Back Forty. I think we've got it finalized. So this will go on the side of the C-Can at the top of the Back Forty when you come off the parking lot, so that riders can understand how the trails transition to each other and the level of difficulty. And of course, our park rules. That's it, thank you.
Brian.
Question, question. So you say crafters market, is that, is that open to anybody, or how does that work? Or is it a registration thing?
Yeah, vendors, we've been marketing it on social media. So we, we're going to have about 30, they have to be Manitoba-based majors. So it's not like a home business, not that top aware of those kinds of things, it's handcrafted.
Just go back to that signage for a minute. Do you have any, is that going to be a real issue, Mary?
For the Back Forty?
No, the other one, when you were talking about, when you were working with tourism and.
Oh, they're hoping, but they're also working with 14 place branded communities. So as much as we think we're priority one, we may not be. And different communities have different needs. So for us, we have a lot of signage close to town.
Right.
Right? Whether it's the cornucopia or the splash tourism. And so they understand that we are well-branded locally. So Niqwa Tourism has asked for more strategic billboards, perhaps at Russell and 116 and Brandon. So we're making them work a little harder for us. It might take a little bit longer for what we want, but I think it will be more impactful than just more billboards two miles out of town.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll move on to finance. A April 2021 financial statement, everybody's had a chance to review it. We'll go ahead, we move forward with the resolution on that. Move by councillor Drury. Seconded by councillor Costincheck. Be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending 2030, 2021. All in favor?
One more.
Oh, one more. Okay, we're going to do the accounts for May 2021. Everybody's had a chance to look at that, we'll move forward with motion on that. Move by councillor Costincheck. Seconded by councillor Drury. Be resolved that we approve the accounts for May 2021 totaling $629,811.91 as reviewed in representing checks 2021 100668 to 2021 100100840, but excluding 2021 100819. All in favor? Mayor Edley, excuse him, self-conflict. Okay, we're going to move forward with a motion on paying Quop bill. Everybody's had a chance to look at that, move forward with motion. Move by councillor DeDoe. Seconded by councillor. Councillor Pando. Be resolved that we approve check 2021 100819 for May 2021. Niqwa classed on Quop totaling $3,672.98. All in favor? Carry. Okay, we are into new business and the RCMP detachment. And I think councillor Kerr is going to speak to that.
No, sorry, oh, Denise, I lost track, sorry.
Right.
I just scared for a moment.
Thank you, everyone. So we'll talk about the municipal service and building the town, or people may call it the RCMP building. Tender's closed on that one after three extensions, just due to change orders. So on the 25th, they closed. We had a successful bid pool of 11 different general contractors bid it. Unfortunately, one was a late submission and one was deemed after a rigorous call for rejecting our bid that we deemed incomplete. So two bidders were rejected out of that pool. So we had nine successful bids. At the end of the day, it was LCL Construction who has become the low bid. And the way we did the bid process on this one is we basically did a structure of what would be a functional structure to make it work tomorrow. And then we had five auctions after that. So in the event that the market depicted we couldn't afford the bells and whistles of everything, it gave us that option to take those five out and make sure we have a building that works and then we do multi-years after that. We're very fortunate to see that the market was favorable and bids looked pretty good. So our pricing one, the pricing one was some site work. Pricing two, no, sorry, pricing one is to furnish the building, pricing two was site works. Pricing three was to have a cold storage building, which we're going to exclude from the contract. Pricing four is the communication towers for the RCMP, was a request directly from them. And pricing five, we've been a generator on site. Just through some different projects, we're also going to remove pricing five, the generator, from the project. And the reason for this is we have generated a water treatment plant that has now become too small with our latest upgrade to the reservoir project. So we didn't seem it too logical to have two separate generators running at the water plant site. This one will run the new building and the fire hall. So it'll take a little bit of work, but we'll see, and that saves the end of the day. So we'll see if you change orders added to the contract, but it definitely saves the price of a new one. So base bid, pricing one, two, and four gives us a total build cost of $4,454,288.
Okay, and I was told to talk to you on July 1st start?
July 1st, but all of this is conditional because obviously we're having a partnership with the RCMP. So we're asking you to approve this in principle tonight, but it also hinders, and it's conditional on the RCMP approving this because they will be the tenant or building, right? So.
Okay, or once they give us that approval, which we're hopeful it is a July 1st start, right?
Yeah.
And they're talking approximately one year to build?
Yes, approximately a year on the build, so.
Okay. No, it's great news. Any comments, any questions? Okay, we will move forward with that resolution. Move by. Seconded by councillor Drury. Be resolved that subject to eventual RCMP concurrence, we accept a tender of LCL Construction for the construction of a new RCMP detachment. Niqwa through the construction of the building, the site planned work, the communication tower, and furniture for a total of $4,454,288 plus applicable taxes. All in favor? Carry. Okay, we are into a bylaw, a first reading on water and wastewater. Now, Mary, you could speak to that if you want, or Holly said she would speak to it.
Well, I would say that the whole suggestion has been working, diligent, to be honest. And we draw times through hire professionals because of all the cross connections. When you change something, it refers back to a previous section. So many good eyes have been on it, and it's been fixed under these circumstances.
I'm sure Joey is ready to go.
All right. 58 times.
So this is an updated bylaw. We recognize that as Niqwa grows and the need to send infrastructure a little further to the properties in Niqwa is required, it was based on an understanding that we knew the main core of Niqwa paid for the bulk of the water plants, the wells, the lines, the raw water, all of those things. So part of paying that through your taxes over the years, when we extended infrastructure to new developments where there are no mains there, we knew we had to update our bylaw to allow for provisions that said, if we're sending a main line out here, out there, our old bylaw, we couldn't charge $2,500 to send a quarter million dollar line to you. It just, it was not fair to anybody else that paid for the main infrastructure. So as much as we had precedents already in place for those few instances, we did send lines. We sent one to Rosedale, and there was a cost recovery based on a recapture of the capital component of there. So those precedents were already there. What it has done, though, with our bylaws caused confusion, I think, in the community for saying, what the bylaw says is $2,500. Non-understanding is costing us a quarter million to send it to your house. So what we did is we rewrote our bylaw such that it has provisions in it now. So it's very clear, if you're in the area of Niqwa where existing infrastructure is there, when depending on whether it's paid for or not already, there's circumstances for replacement and renewal, all those kinds of things. If you're in an area where there are no mains or infrastructure, then you get viewed under a different component. So these big developments that are going up, and we also subjected ourselves to the same parameters when we did CN development. We said we have to take the burden of the costs and divide it across the properties that are going to be there because everybody that's lived here for their whole lives and paid for everything else shouldn't have to bear the burden of that particular development in a certain area. So as growth happens, there is the ability on a case-by-case basis to negotiate those costs with the new developer to what makes sense and making sure that all the affected properties go away, whether they're currently developed or not, can either come in and pay a portion of the cost upfront, or there is an ability to recoup that portion of that cost at a date in the future by town saying, okay, we can bankroll it for now. That's what we did in the case of the Rosedale line. We interpreted how many particular properties would benefit from that particular line. So at that point in time, when they want to get water, we have the ability to bring that cost forward and make sure that they're contributing to that capital infrastructure. We also looked at the cost of actually renewing services in town for what we were charging. And we knew for a few years now that we were not charging enough. So whether we would get our bills in from our contractors or whether we did it internally, we were subsidizing basically the rate fares and covering a portion of that cost. So it's very clear now, and we've been working on the division as such in 2017 through the PEB recommendations, sharing information with us. We changed our rate bylaw and structure that we do not use sewer callouts anymore because that's also a subsidization. We're doing it for $75. So we stopped that process in July 1st of 2017. And now we said, we can go. Our turn to go would be more based on whether it was related to the part of the line that would be ours or the mains. But property owners are actually responsible for the whole service line. And we cleaned up all those definitions to know that there's a service line. The service connection is our point from the main to the property line. Then there's the actual service that goes to the house. So there's definition cleanup in there. We clarified as best we could everything. And the price now that we're looking at, and this was just one characteristic in the bylaw, would be $5,000 now for renewal. That would renew you to the property line. We would initiate through that because that would be something we would make sure you have, you're still responsible to do from the property line into your house, do your connections internally, and those types of things. There is a little bit of a reprieve if you're exactly renewing both the water and the sewer lines, where we would look at, rather than charge you twice, you would get the same service for one dig. We also looked at making sure we had service callout rates in there so that we were at least breaking even as such. And I guess the biggest component in there, at minimum, if we were to take a particular water sewer main into an area that has no services, no mains or anything, now the minimum charge for water would be $16,000. The minimum charge for sewer is $5,000. You would pay no less than that ever. But if, for example, we plow that line in and put all those services in there and based on all the information we gathered through tender, it comes back and it says, it actually cost us $21,000 to give you water, that's what you pay. So you basically pay the minimum of 16 or the actual bill. In the case of sewer, the minimum of 5 or the actual bill. But keep in mind, that's for where there is no mains or no infrastructure. That cost taking into account, making sure that capital costs recovery on the water plant, you know, and all of those things that gets the water to Niqwa as well. So you can't just come into.
just come into the game after everybody's built the main components and just, you know, toss in a few dollars and say you're in. You have to also, it's like a membership, you've got to buy a membership into our water plant and to all our infrastructure as well. So, that's all cleaned up with the bylaws now, and is there anything else maybe Janine can speak to?
No, that's pretty thorough on it. We've attached other documentation, so meter sizing, formula, that's in the back, some diagram indicating where property line, what town is ownership, what resident ownership is. Another component to the servicing, the renewal portion is that, like we said, we bumped it from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. That still is a subsidized program, believe it or not, by the time we go all the work that did the material and the street restoration, boulevard restoration, our costs still, on average, might come close to that eight to ten thousand, so for those that think we're not subsidizing, we still, the town is still subsidizing residents that way and trying to help them out. So, I understand you just narrowed the gap a little bit first.
Just maybe one more thing I just thought of as you were speaking, we do have some requirements in there, I'm pretty sure our zone bylaws and all of the documents we have for planning suggest that where services are available, residents are required to connect. We do know in town there's areas where people aren't connected to one or the other service for a token reason. It might be that it's just an area that is currently not serviceable because of the cost to put it there, but as we grow, there is obviously would be an option for somebody to connect. So, rather than force people to connect, what we're allowing some kind of a leeway such that if we do put a main down a certain area that would run past your property, you would get notified that you should be connecting to the services, we would give you a two-year reprieve, you would have the option of paying it forthright, going through a complete levy perhaps on your taxes if that was the case, or the other option being if somebody just couldn't do it or afford it and didn't want to, once the sale of that property went through it, it would be listed as kind of a K-beat on title, as we did, as you noticed more recently, we had some of it come through here from a property just over here, and we actually are going to register a K-beat on the property that if and when that property changes into the fact that we've been developing something that they are required to connect to the water now and the sewer, if and when it goes to that particular area. So, we, when you spend that kind of millions and millions of dollars putting the infrastructure and create water and sewer in your community, you want to make sure you get as many people connected as you can.
Okay.
Mary, add to that. When you're trying to figure out what numbers are to put now, if you go through it and color code, or use symbols to pair them up ahead of time, then you just go with the symbols to change the numbers later? I'm taking a vote out.
Green is colors.
Green, red, blue, and white.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Colleen, thank Janine. Is there any questions, any comments? Okay, we will move forward with that resolution, the first reading, moved by Councilor Druck. Back to my Councilor Kerr. Be resolved that bylaw number three two oh four dash two one, being a bylaw of town Niwa, respecting the management and regulation of the water and wastewater systems, be now read for the first time, all in favor? Carry it. Okay, we are down to other businesses, if anybody has anything they'd like to talk about, or mention?
Yes, Councilor Druck. I'd just like to acknowledge today, June first in Manitoba, this is actually the start of Filipino Heritage Month within our province. It's part of recognizing a large Filipino population that has moved to Manitoba, starting back fifty-five years ago, it's also in keeping with their independence on June twelfth, so just invoking all our new community residents, and we have had celebrations before at the park, and I look forward to in future years again, we can celebrate Filipino Heritage Month within Niwa again. Perfect, thank you. Sorry. Oh, yes, Colleen.
I'll just maybe mention that, I didn't do a report, but the only thing I would like to draw attention to is the fact that we did lower our flag in recognition of the two-hundred-and-fifteen children that were found in camps, and we'll stay that way for the two-hundred-and-fifteen hours, so in fact, we'll keep it right that way until Monday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, I guess we'll move forward with the German. Moved by. Councilor. Padlo. Seconded by Councilor Costencheck. Be resolved that Council of Town Niwa, the Honorable Attorney of the Red Army of Council at seven thirty-five PM, all in favor? Carry it.